...County Candidate Forum for Bend City Council Position Five. You may have expected that we were going to have four candidates and two positions for the city council. One of the candidates for the other position was unable to attend tonight. So, we are happy to have our two candidates for Position Five. As I mentioned, this forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters for Deschutes County and the Deschutes County Public Library. The forum provides the public an opportunity to hear from the two candidates for Bend City Council Position Five. We want to remind you also that the League is a nonpartisan organization. It does not endorse or support candidates or parties. Bend Broadband, COTV Channel 11 and 611 on Bend Broadband is taping this forum for rebroadcast. The replays begin October 14th and run each Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. through October 28th. The forum will also be available on video on demand on the COTV category. And KPOV, radio station KPOV, 88.9 FM, High Desert Community Radio, is also recording tonight's forum, and you can check their website, kpov.org, for their rebroadcast schedule. My name is Dave Jones and I am your moderator this evening. At this time, I would like to introduce our two candidates for Bend City Council Position Number Five, Mark Capell and Nathan Body. Each candidate will have two minutes for your opening statement, and that will include why you are running for this position. And then, you will each have a minute and a half for the answers, for your answers during the candidate forum, and then, again, two minutes for closing statements at the end of the forum. Now, we're going to keep you on time. We've got cards to prove it. So, the yellow card, we'll hold that up, that's 15 seconds. When you see the yellow card, please start to wind up your answer. And if you're not winding up fast enough, you see the dreaded red card. And we would like you to finish, because we want to cover as much territory, so you can't finish when you see the red card come up. And written questions may be asked by audience members and there are paper and pen available. We would like you to submit your questions to a League member no later than 5:45. And we ask that you keep your questions circumspect and make the questions general in nature, so they're not addressing one specific candidate, and so both candidates will have the opportunity to answer. And we also ask the audience not to applaud or indicate dissatisfaction with a candidate or an answer to a question. And at this time, please, if you have a cellphone, silence it or turn it off. And now, for our introductory opening statements, again, two minutes per. We're going to go in alphabetical order to start, and that means Nathan Body, you narrowly edged out Mark Capell. So, your opening statement, two minutes. Why are you running for this position, and why do you feel you are the best candidate to represent the city of Bend?
Excellent. Thanks so much. I'm Nathan Body. I'm a physician at St. Charles. Been in Bend for a number of years. And first of all, I'd just like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's really inspiring to have this sort of interest in local government, and that's a great thing. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters as well. It's a great organization. Thank you for hosting this and putting this together for us. I also want to thank Mark, because I think all too often, we don't appreciate the sacrifice and the service that goes into being a local elected official, and for that, he deserves thanks. Unfortunately, I think we've also embarked on a very wasteful pattern of spending behavior at the Bend City. And we really have to move on to a new way of thinking and a new way of doing business here in Bend. Because as we've continued to embark on large spending projects, there's been a lot of waste, there's been a lot of cronyism, there's been a lot of lack of public input, and that's been hurting small business, it's been hurting big business, it's not been good for local residents, and really is beginning to price people out of Bend. And I hope to make Bend a more affordable place for everyone. I hope to make the city run more efficiently and run better. And I think, as a physician treating a patient, my interest is making that person well as quickly as possible. And I'd like to extend that to the community and the city of Bend, and really improve the health of our town and the health of our community here. And for that reason, I think, you know, it's important, as we sit on this precipice of growth, really expanding very quickly here, we have to do this well, we have to plan it wisely, or we will be growing in a way that we do not appreciate as a community. Thanks very much, and I look forward to your questions.
All right, thank you very much. Mark Capell, same question for you. Why are you running for this position, and why do you feel you're the best candidate to represent the city of Bend?
Thanks, Dave, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. It's a pleasure to be here. And it's a pleasure to serve on the city council. I've been on the council for two terms now, and I'm running again for a number of reasons. One of them is personal, I, actually, a couple of them are personal. One of them is that I thoroughly enjoy doing it. You meet a lot of nice people, you get involved in issues that impact our community, and it's very mentally stimulating work. So personally, I enjoy it. Another personal reason I'm doing it is because I'm from here, you know, my family's been in Bend, next year will be 100 years, and I care about our community. And I want, you know, I left Bend and did the corporate career and moved home a dozen years ago, and I want Bend to have the beauty and the services and the class that made me want to move home. I want to, I want to keep that livability and beauty so that 20 years from now, we still want to live here. So I think that's really important. I think there's some main, and then, in terms of why I'm running, there's a huge difference between Nathan and I. I am a firm believer that we need to plan for infrastructure improvements, and it's not an inexpensive thing to do. But, and the hardest thing to do on council is to vote for a raise in prices, because I know that impacts everybody, and for a lot of people, it's not an affordable thing, and it's a terrible thing to do. But our property tax rates are some of the lowest in the state. For instance, Redmond is twice our property tax rate. And even with the increases we've voted in that Nathan suggested from his work on a committee, we have about average rates for utilities around the state. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, on to our questions, and again, 90 seconds, a minute and a half for your responses. And Mark Capell, we'll start with you. What do you perceive are the three most important concerns facing Bend today, and how would you help solve them?
The three biggest concerns in my mind, one of them is the public safety. We've, I think, done a good job staffing up both police and fire, and the voters were kind enough to approve an operating levy for fire, but it's a five-year operating levy. So we need to start thinking longer term, how are we going to fund this beyond that five-year period, and how are we going to manage that? And so I think that's a big concern. I think another concern is infrastructure. We've done a really good job on long-term planning for water and sewer systems, but transportation is still an area where we have a short-term fix, because we did the geo-bond for road work a couple of years ago, and that work is just reaching its last project or second-to-last project. But beyond the geo-bond, how do we plan for long-term transportation? And that's roads and transit and bike and ped. So how do we manage that long-term? So that's a second issue. And third issue is general livability, which things like Mirapond fall in that, and I'm sure we'll talk about that more, things like the vacation rental program, how, you know, those kinds of livability, how do we make Bend stay the place we love?
All right, thank you. Nathan Body, same question. What do you perceive are the three most important concerns facing Bend today, and how will you help solve them?
Well, a huge overarching concern, I think, is the affordability of our town. We're beginning to price entire segments of our population out of our community, and as more and more people, for good reasons, want to move here, we have to make sure that there's an affordable mix of housing, that there are adequate jobs and prosperity, so that people can afford to stay here and can afford to live here. And I think we need that, that mix of infrastructure, that mix of housing across the income levels. Otherwise, we run the real risk of pricing out segments of our population, becoming essentially just sort of a hotel where everyone lives somewhere else and drives into Bend for work, and that's not what we want for our community, that's not what's good for Bend, that's not a real town. A second, really complimentary problem to that, is how we're spending our public funds and how we're passing these costs of building and growth on to residents. You'll hear a lot from incumbent about planning and infrastructure, and it's the lack of planning and lack of adequate infrastructure that got us into the mess with our sewer infrastructure and the very expensive water project that is of dubious need. So, you know, I think we do need more affordable but adequate infrastructure. And finally, I think we just have to maintain the integrity and the quality of our neighborhoods and the lifestyle that we enjoy here in Bend, and we have to make sure that that stays for years to come.
All right, thank you. Second question, and Nathan Body will stay with you on this to begin. Can you explain your campaign finances and who are your donors?
My campaign finances are a couple of family members and quite a number of friends and small donors. I have gotten no real large chunks of campaign funding from any business entity at all. We've held a couple of fundraisers, and I'm quite sure that I'll be outspent by the incumbent. But I think that my goals are true, and I think that it's what's best for the community, and hopefully that resonates and doesn't become a price tag or a purchase price for a local government election. So it's a, it's a mix of local citizens and acquaintances and people who have an interest in local government and want things to function better. And I think it's driven by fears over what could happen as we talk about doubling population and we do it badly. I think that justifiably concerns a lot of residents and people that just have concerns about their lifestyle and their, and their homes here in Bend.
Thank you. Mark Capell, same question. Can you explain your campaign finances and who are your donors?
Well, first off, campaign finance doesn't decide who wins. The last campaign I ran four years ago, my opponent raised something over $40,000. I think I was in the $16,000 or $17,000 range, and I still won fairly handily. So I don't think the money, the amount of money is really the decider, I think it's the issues. And, but this, this year for my campaign, a lot of the money is coming from family and friends, and a surprising number of people that, for instance, didn't support me in the last campaign, have come forward and said, "We think the infrastructure ideas of your opponent are so scary for our community in terms of long-term planning that we're wanting to put some money in." And it's been really interesting, because it's people that normally wouldn't be supporting me otherwise, usually, because it's, it's been an interesting year.
All right, thank you. Next question, and Mark Capell will stay with you on this. And you mentioned this earlier, the issues of what to do with Mirapond and how to fund it have been going on for years. What suggestions would you propose to move forward with making this decision?
Okay, so, I sit on the Mirapond Advisory Board, and I'm also on the committee that's negotiating with Pacific Power. I had a meeting last Wednesday in Portland with the CEO of Pacific Power, because we need their support in terms of doing the right thing for our community. And the meeting went really well, and we have an idea that we're having some drawings put together on, and today, there was a whole series of emails trying to set a date for the Mirapond Advisory Board meeting. It'll probably be the week of the 20th, I think. And at that, we're going to bring out a plan that we want community input on. That plan will address three things. What we've learned so far is half of the community wants it to stay a pond, half of the community wants it to go back to a river, and nobody wants to pay for it. And so what we think we have is something that pretty much solves most of that. It's a public-private partnership in terms of how we pay for it, and it's keeping the pond, but taking the dam out and turning it back into a more natural-looking flowing river. And so, we're really excited to get the drawings finished, so we can start getting community input on it, because I think it'll be an exciting time over the next couple of months.
All right, thank you. Nathan, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I've got it. So, Mark's right about one thing, it is a very polarized issue, and I think for good reason, people are concerned about Mirapond. It's a really important feature of downtown Bend, and something that we want to maintain its quality and its effect on our economy and on, on the beauty of downtown. Unfortunately, what has happened thus far is several hundred thousand dollars of public funds have gone to this sort of analysis and examining the issue, and nothing really has been decided, and nothing's really come out of that expenditure. I think that the most important thing, and what we must not do, is this public-private partnership, because if we get involved in operating a derelict outdated hydropower facility, that could be ruinous economically for the city of Bend. I think that Pacific Power owns the dam now, and it's incumbent on them to maintain or take the dam out. I have a good experience with a similar project that I worked on in another river, where we removed an old outdated dam and turned it into a light-water park, which is along the lines of what's proposed by the Bend Paddle Trail Alliance, and essentially leaving the water level around where it is now, but having enhanced recreation and even more enjoyment of that area connected to the Deschutes River, which we all enjoy and which we spend a lot of time on, and a great feature of town.
Okay, thank you. Next question, Nathan Body, we'll stay with you to begin. Do you believe the direction the city council is taking on the development of Juniper Ridge is in the best interests of the community? And if not, what changes would you make?
So, no is the answer. I don't think it's a good, a good idea. I don't think it really ever was much of a good idea. And I was speaking with some folks a little bit earlier before this began. I think we run into problems when a city government behaves as a land developer. I don't think that's a good idea. It's not what local governments should be doing, it's not where they should be spending their time or our money. That being said, it's, it belongs to the city. I think that when we talk about citing four-year colleges and we talk about attracting local businesses, I think we have to use that area as it was intended and cite some of those facilities in an area that is, that was really always planned and intended for that, and really try to get it off of the, off of the books of the taxpayers of Bend, so that we don't continue to spend good money after bad. It could be, it, it is, there's no reason that something that the city owns has become sort of a blight on the landscape. And I think we really should try to do something with it that at least doesn't throw more money after, good money after bad.
All right, thank you. Mark Capell, your thoughts, Juniper Ridge?
Well, Nathan is right in one aspect on his answer, and that is that it's not the job of the city to be a developer for Juniper Ridge. And I would expect within the next year or two, somebody, we have a developer step forward to take on the project. The challenge at the beginning, though, is how do you get some basic infrastructure in there so that it is developable? And how do you fund it? So you sell a few lots to fund some infrastructure, and now there's a couple hundred acres that are shovel-ready industrial, commercial land. And so I think it's headed in the right direction. It took a major downturn when the economy slowed down, but it's one of those projects that for the community is probably a 30- or 40-year project, so it'll probably have a few more downturns before the whole project is finished. But I would expect now that we have some of the basic infrastructure in there, that we've funded with the sale of some land in there, that we will see it be moving forward in the near future. There's actually some people showing some interest in it as we speak.
All right, thank you. Next question. Mark Capell, do you support the west side location of the Oregon State University Cascades campus in Bend? And how would the city deal with the potential traffic congestion?
Okay, so, this is a little bit difficult for me to answer, because I'm still on the city council. We are in the middle of judicial hearings, and we will have a final vote at our next council meeting on approval of the hearings officer's hearing, decision. So I can't really talk about the specifics of the location. What came before council is, does it match the development code? And council, in the, in the first vote, said, yes, it does match the development code. The, the land is zoned appropriately for a college or university, and so, you know, the question somebody asked me the other day is, well, if Fred Myers wanted to open up there, it's also zoned appropriately for that. Would people rather have a Fred Myers there, you know? And, and I think anybody's going to, you know, seeing that land developed, people are going to be, that live near there are going to be unhappy with it. So it's, it's a bit of a challenge. But the big picture is, I'm a big supporter of having OSU with a four-year campus in Bend somewhere, because I think it's going to be great for education in our community and great for the economy.
All right, thank you. Nathan Body, do you support the west side location of OSU Cascades? And how would the city deal with potential traffic congestion?
So, completely agree with Mark on one point, in that a four-year university will be economic and an educational boon to Bend. That's, that's not really part of this equation. However, one of the reasons that this is tied up in courts and hearings is because our zoning and our city code is a bit vague, and it is a bit loose in its, the way it steers our growth and steers our development. And for that reason, it's, it's sort of an up-down vote on whether the campus can legally go there. I think the council has advocated a lot of its responsibility in leading the OSU Cascades sighting. I think that there are other places in town that make more sense. There's certainly other places in town that make more sense from the perspective of infrastructure and roads. That's an area that already doesn't have much housing stock available, it already has crowded roads, so I think it's a, a bit of a questionable site. That being said, you know, I think that the failure was in leading into this with a little bit more input from the city. Certainly, a campus like that would have accepted some leadership from the council about where it might go. And what I hear when I meet with public safety officials and fires, you know, they're concerned about the roads, what would we do about the congestion? I don't know. It's not, it's not going to be easy to, to solve. I think better public transportation will help.
All right, thank you. Next question. Nathan Body, the lack of developable land within the urban growth boundary has been blamed for the high cost of housing in Bend. Do you think the city council has been negligent in taking so long to expand the UGB?
Well, the first negligence, I don't know if it quite meets negligence, but the, the first failure of the council was in, in the initial UGB proposal, which was rejected by the state, because it was sort of a haphazard land grab at the edges of town. I think that it's questionable, certainly, whether we need to expand the UGB initially before we have more infill development and development in town. As we grow, I think we encourage the growth to go in the places that make most sense for Bend, the places that have the infrastructure already, that's less expensive, the places that have the roads, that have the neighborhoods, that can use that development for growth. And then, as we grow and fill in what we have already, then we talk about where we should grow on our periphery that makes the most sense. I think what we should not do is just take the wheels off and let Katy bar the door and development on, on every avenue along the periphery. That will be both more expensive, it will congest traffic, it certainly isn't going to create less expensive housing if we, if we do this poorly. What we need to do is ensure a mix of affordable housing across all income levels and use our code and our zoning law and our SDCs to steer the development into where is most desirable for our community and where is best for Bend.
Thank you. Mark Capell, your thoughts on UGB?
This is a painful process that I've been going through, and I think everybody knows that. I think I've, I've had three or four meetings with people of the state talking about, once we get through this UGB, we need statewide reform so that we can go through small UGB adjustments. Instead of doing these large things every 25 years that cost millions of dollars to do, you know, let's have minor adjustments as the community changes every few years that aren't as political and don't cost as much to run through. And the state is working on doing that kind of adjustment to their system, and I think that makes a lot of sense. With this particular UGB, I would estimate that the growth that we're going to have, which the growth for the next 16 years, we're expected to go from 80,000 to 120,000 according to Portland State. And that growth, 80, I would estimate that 80% of that growth will be accommodated inside our existing urban growth boundary. So we're not talking about a large land expansion or land grab, as Nathan says. I think the biggest expansion is going to be in terms of commercial industrial land, because that's where we have a real shortage. And it's something we need to get done, and it's, it does impact prices because of availability, and be happy to talk to people more about it later.
All right, thank you. Next question. Mark Capell, what would you do to improve the amount of affordable housing available?
First, the UGB is, is, is one, because supply and demand, if, if demand for, for land is, is high and there isn't a lot of availability, prices are going to be up. Second is infrastructure. So, for instance, a couple of weeks ago at city council, we voted to move forward on the southeast sewer interceptor. That will open up a lot of land already inside the UGB that currently is undevelopable. And that will add, that will add so much inventory that I think it'll have a dramatic impact on the price of lots. Then, we have an affordable housing fee that we charge on permits for new homes, and that money goes into a fund where we fund affordable housing projects on, like, short-term loans, so that they can get the project off the ground. It helps them by having local money into the project. It allows them to get more state and national grants, because it shows local support of the project. We're also taking, looking at land that we've purchased as part of road projects that we had to, let's say, we had to buy a lot, and the road goes through part of that lot, well, there's excess land there that we no longer need. And we just, right now, are working on a request for proposal for affordable housing project builders to come to us with a project for that property.
All right, thank you. Nathan Body, what would you do to improve the amount of affordable housing available?
Well, affordable housing, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, is one of the key problems that we face in Bend right now. And affordable doesn't just mean low-income housing. Affordable means an array of housing across income levels to support a service industry sector, so that people can afford to move here and afford to have jobs here. We have to not burden our citizens and our residents with increased utility fees and wasteful spending, because that just simply makes the, the cost of living here greater and greater. One thing that affordable housing isn't is cheap land for a developer. That makes it more affordable for one or two people to make a larger profit, but it doesn't translate directly into affordability of housing. I think what we need to do is use our city code and our zoning and planning, as well as our SDCs, to encourage infill development and incentivize developers to build the types of mix of housing that we need in our community, so that we have all levels of income represented and a broad array of people can afford to live and, and work in Bend. And if we overburden our businesses with increased utilities and fees and SDCs, then there's nowhere for those new residents to work. So we need affordable housing to grow with our, with our economy and our businesses, and we need to attract that sort of growth in a balanced way across our community, so that everyone prospers.
All right, thank you. We have several questions that have been submitted from the We have several questions that have been submitted from the audience. Thank you, audience members, for your questions. And Nathan, we'll stay with you on this first one, it's regarding public transit. Do you or do you not favor Bendites being provided public transit on Sundays and evenings, at least Friday evenings? And your reason for yes or no?
Yes, absolutely. Unless we just decide that no one moves around on those days, then we need public transit. We really owe it to the community to take a harder look at how we're addressing public transportation here. We're a large enough community and particularly as we grow larger, we really have to incorporate public transportation in a usable way that actually serves the needs of citizens at Bend and the needs of people that are every day going about their lives so that they do have an alternative to getting in an individual vehicle and causing more road congestion. I think we blend that with a mixture of pedestrian and alternative transportation and we really just, we, first, we should start with what we have and take a harder look and make it work in a more meaningful way. And then we need to expand that with more service routes, more frequent times so that people can realistically use that in a day-to-day life and it's not a sort of voyage to get from the west side to the east side that takes a half a day or something that really doesn't serve anybody's needs. It's important to note that we would have more ability to address these sorts of things if we hadn't spent the money, public money on other projects first. And what you hear a lot of is infrastructure, infrastructure, and it's this big pot of money that we're gonna dip into your wallet for and then the next big pot of money we're gonna dip into your wallet for. By the way, there's transportation that we forgot about, so we're just gonna come back and dip in again. So I think we have to use our public funds a little bit more wisely.
All right, thank you. Mark Capell, I'll repeat the question. Do you or do you not favor Bendites being provided public transit on Sundays and evenings, at least Friday evenings? Any reason for yes or no?
Yes, I do. But what we haven't figured out is how to pay for it. And I'm a fan of transit. When we lived in Chicago, I took the train and the bus to work every day and it's a great way to get around. But the difference there is, train and the bus came every five or 10 minutes versus here, it's 40 minutes. And so what we lose out on is the ability to serve what are called choice riders, people who choose to ride rather than have to ride. If it was more convenient and more often and better routes, more routes, people would choose to ride it because it's convenient. Right now, it's not very convenient and so we need to fix that. It is, the problem is, you know, we have one of the lowest property tax rates in the state. And so when 85% of our general fund goes to police and fire and those two are, you know, we just got fire funded adequately with the last vote, police is still a little underfunded and they're taking 85% of the general fund budget. How do you fund things like transit? And it's a discussion that is part of the whole transportation plan, roads, transit, bike and ped, that I think now that we've got water and sewer on a good track moving forward long-term, that's the next conversation is how do we do that?
All right, thank you. Next question from the audience. Mark Capell, do you think there should be a limit to the number of contracts that the city awards to any one firm?
Well, it's not legal in the state of Oregon. The state contracting laws, depending on what it is for, if it's, say, engineering, it's done differently than if it's a bid for a project. But if the, if who bids on the project is qualified to do the work and they're the low bidder, by law, we will give them the business.
All right. Nathan Body, same question. Do you think there should be a limit to the number of contracts the city awards to any one firm?
I think that the concern is that the one firm can subsume the roles and responsibilities of elected officials. And what we see too often in Bend is that consultants are brought in to come up with a project design. The consultants are told, we really like this project to look like this. So of course, the consultant comes back with that sort of design with a high top-dollar price tag. What we see over and over is that Bend is paying a higher price tag for the same project than an equivalent-sized town in Oregon. We've seen that on a variety of infrastructure and building issues. I think we have good city engineers, we have good city employees and we should use them to come up with some of these projects. And the council should take the lead in planning and talking about these things and directing the city government rather than paying for a consultant from the other side of the country to come in and pay top dollar. So I think it's less concerning how many contracts go to one consultant. I think the concern is the number of consultants. Yes, they're often from a few different firms and there's an obvious sort of conflict of interest and people sort of start feeding at the same trough. And I don't think that's good for public funds. It's not good for government. I think the council should take the lead and use consultants when we have to, but certainly not for things that city council should be doing.
All right, thank you. Next question deals with Juniper Ridge that we've talked about that, but perhaps you could elaborate a little bit. Question is, and Nathan will start with you, what is your vision for Juniper Ridge and how should it be managed until development starts?
Well, it's a part of town that is sorely in need of some injection of growth and it's a good place, when we talk about infill development, to grow. Conveniently, the city does own it. Inconveniently, it's costing us, the taxpayer and the ratepayer, a lot of money. I think that we are good, we should be good stewards of the area and develop that responsibly so that it injects capital and growth into Bend. But I think we should get it off of our books as quickly as possible in a responsible way so that we don't continue to spend on this decades-old project that really was not a great idea for the city to get involved with. I think the city government is tasked with representing the interest of residents and steering growth and attracting business. It shouldn't be in the business of being that developer and being that business itself. It's just sort of an odd marriage of roles. But I think it's, it belongs to Bend. We have to liquidate that asset wisely and attract some business while we're doing it so that we're creating some jobs and also getting this area to become less of a, less of an eyesore and less of a public safety hazard.
All right, thank you. Mark Capell, what is your vision for Juniper Ridge and how should it be managed until development starts?
Well, there are shovel-ready lots at Juniper Ridge today that businesses have been looking at to open their offices out there. Those are paying for, the ones that are there now have paid for the infrastructure that we've put in there. And now we have shovel-ready lots where we can have jobs. So long-term, I think the city will divest of the project to one or multiple developers. And where today, when I have a guest from out of town after we've done outdoor activities, we tend to show them downtown and we tend to show them the mill district. I think 20 years from now, people will be showing people what's going on at Juniper Ridge because I think that's where the future jobs, the new jobs in Bend are gonna be.
All right, thank you. Next question from the audience. Mark Capell, will you state your position on piping the historic Pilot Butte Canal?
Historic canal? Okay, so the water issue in the basin is that about 90% of the water that is taken out of the rivers is taken out by the irrigation districts. And half of the water that they take out is lost in transmission. So through evaporation, through seepage into the ground. So if we want to return water to the river, if we want to continue, we've made great progress over the last 10 years with projects that have increased the river flow. If you just go down by the river house and look at water now compared to what it was 10 years ago, there's a vast improvement in the flow of the river. And we need to keep improving our river flow because it is vital to maintaining the beauty and the natural resources of our community. So unfortunately, the people that live along the canals don't like it. And I understand that. I used to have a house that sat on a canal and it's a nice feature. But I think if we work with the neighbors and we work with the irrigation districts, we can get them to pipe it in a way where the neighbors end up with a nice landscaped backyard. But I'm in favor of piping and in fact, the entire city council today is in favor of piping because it does conserve water and put it back into the river.
Nathan Body, your thoughts? Will you state your position on piping the historic Pilot Butte Canal?
So piping of canals in our watershed, to my mind, really shows a fundamental lack of understanding of how the hydrogeology works in our river basin. So we do take the money, the water out of the surface water in the rivers and put it in canals. And some of that water does infiltrate. In other words, it leaks out the bottom of these canals. But because of the way our aquifers build, that water then goes back into the rivers. So piping canals makes a regulatory sort of window dressing around keeping more water in the rivers. It really does nothing of the kind. If we pipe all the canals, we're actually allowing less recharge into the local rivers and watershed. So A, it's not making any more water. It's not putting any more back in the rivers and our surface streams. It's expensive. And although the city of Bend isn't paying for that piping itself, although a canal's on a river, it is a nice feature to have in town. So, you know, I don't think it does any good to pipe the Pilot Butte Canal as far as a conserving water or hydrogeologic rationale. And it does sort of degrade the neighborhoods that are enjoying that feature. So no, I don't think it's a good idea and it certainly is not something I would advocate for.
All right, thank you. Next question from the audience and Nathan Body, start with you. Will you support a moratorium on vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods?
So moratorium implies that this is sort of a temporary stop to increasing the number of vacation rentals in town. I think that is a good idea. I don't think it needs to last very long because I think what we really need to do is take a look at how we want our town to grow and how we want vacation rentals to work. What we don't want is the entire west side of Bend to become sort of an amorphous hotel where no one really lives and it's not a real neighborhood. That degrades the quality of the neighborhood and the people that already live there. That being said, I don't think we need to be in the business of saying what someone can't do with their house if it's their residence and someone goes out of town and wants to vacation rental. But I think when somebody is involved in two and four and six additional homes that are then being used as rental properties, I think we need to ensure that some of those are long-term rentals because we badly need rental housing stock in town. And we need to make sure that as we grow, we don't turn into a town of vacation rentals. So that can be done by sort of fixing the number of permits that are issued, but really what we're talking about is kind of certain parts of town. It's not everywhere. So I think mainly what we should do is have some idea of, if it's your primary residence, find to do what you like. If it's not your home and it's just rental property, then we regulate that so that it's at least a component of long-term rental for parts of the year or a certain number of long-term rental properties.
All right, thank you. Mark Capell, will you support a moratorium on vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods?
No, not right now. And the reason is, is this is a very passionate issue on both sides. We've had a lot of people come before council in the last month, all of them pretty passionate. Some of them saying, stop vacation rentals. And some of them saying, protect our property rights. And what I don't want to do is have a knee-jerk reaction and put something in place for a long-term fix without doing our due diligence. So at the last council meeting, we actually approved a work plan for the next few months to figure out what is the best approach for vacation rentals and how should we move this issue forward? People are being impacted. I see both sides. If, if all of a sudden, all of the houses around me were vacation rentals, I know I wouldn't like that. And so I understand where those people are coming from. But I also know that property rights are an important issue. And so when we first started talking about a moratorium at council, the first thing we found out was just plan on spending a lot of time in court with attorneys if you do this. And so rather than taking that kind of drastic measure and a quick fix to a big issue, let's work it out correctly and do our homework before we jump into something on this one.
Next question from the audience. Mark Capell, does growth pay for itself? Please explain.
That's actually been a changing thing. When I first got on council, there was a, an agreement between the city and the builders because of some lawsuits that had been filed before I got on council, probably 10 years or so ago. And so we were collecting SDCs, which are the system development charges, at below what their cost was. And since I've been on council, we've moved that up to collect 100% of the cost. And system development charges are what pay for infrastructure for new houses and new commercial buildings. And so you pay for a sewer fee and a road fee and a water fee and so on. So the goal at council has been development, we set our rates, for instance, for permits based on what's our cost to process that permit, what's our cost to go through the plans, what's our cost to do all the inspections? We do the same thing with SDCs. What's our cost for infrastructure to support these? And, and the goal has been to collect 100% of the cost of new development. It's a, it's a challenge because you can, you know, you have to make sure you have the right projects in your list of projects that support growth, but I think that's been the goal for the last half of it.
Thank you. Nathan Body, does growth pay for itself? Please explain.
I think unmanaged growth can shoot itself in the head, frankly. It's incredibly dangerous if we don't manage growth correctly. We want growth that's intelligent. We want growth that supports our local economy. And the city, local government's role and responsibility is making sure that that growth happens in a way that's, that's good for Bend. And that means that we have living wage jobs and that we have high-paying jobs and that we have low-paying jobs and that we attract the smart kinds of development that we'd like to see in town and we put it in places that are going to be beneficial to our economy and healthy for our residents. I think what we don't want is unmanaged, unregulated growth to prop up the profits of a handful of developers in town. We have to make sure that large developments that do require increased infrastructure do pay their share. And we have to make sure that other kinds of development that we might want to incentivize pay a little less. And we have to make the city government work in a less cumbersome and obstructionary way. There's too much of the city government working against local businesses and against citizens. It really should be working for their interests and should be promoting the prosperity of Bend.
All right, thank you. We're going to return now to some of the prepared questions that the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County have for you. Nathan Body, what role should the city council have in retaining or attracting businesses to Bend?
So dovetails with the last question. I think we make the landscape attractive to entice an out-of-town business or someone that might be locating in this area. And we incentivize the kinds of businesses and the kinds of development that we want. I think what we want to avoid is getting in the business of, once again, sort of being a developer or being a partner with someone coming into town. We don't want to recruit a large industry and send out the welcome mat to such a degree that we're paying that business to come here or that we aren't realizing the benefits in the forms of jobs and injection of capital in the community. So I think we do want to attract businesses and we do that by making a fair landscape for someone to come. And we make it a little more attractive for local businesses that are small and startups and make it more affordable for those guys to do what they- and make it more affordable for those guys to do what they are after. And to that end, making a less cumbersome process for things like permitting and planning and a little more nimble city government will certainly be helpful. And I tell you what, property taxes are one thing, and we pay far more than our property tax in our sewer and water utility rates. So I think we have to keep our tax base and our rates low enough that that will attract businesses to town.
Thank you. Mark Capel, what role should the city council have in retaining or attracting businesses to Bend?
We have set up a number of things in the last few years on council to make it better for businesses to move here. So for instance, one thing we've done is set up enterprise zones where if businesses are bringing good-paying jobs to the community, they can save on their taxes for the first few years as an incentive to move here and to help them fund the upfront infrastructure costs they have. We've also, for local businesses in, you know, when local businesses over the last few years were moving into smaller spaces or moving into other spaces across town, trying to help retain local businesses, we lowered the cost of that permitting so that they, the improvements they made didn't cost them as much. We've been working quite a lot with economic development of Central Oregon and attracting businesses. I regularly end up in meetings with people coming to Bend to look at putting their business here. We have, probably one of the greatest things we've done in the last few years is we've added a business advocate on the city manager's staff. So if a business is coming here or changing their building or doing something, they have somebody that can help them through the process. So we've really moved to a business-friendly city hall, and it's pretty fun.
All right, thank you. Mark Capel, the number of homeless families in the Bend area seems to be increasing. What do you see as the city's role in assisting the homeless in Bend?
That is probably the toughest question tonight. That one is one where I wish I had the right answer because I think we would be moving forward on it if we could. The challenge is, how do you get temporary housing, something like Bethlehem Inn? How do you fund that kind of thing? They struggle for finances to support what they have. How do you then get transitional housing from that level of emergency housing to small apartments and move along the housing continuum? I don't have the answer to that one. That one is a tough one. It is, it is almost mind-boggling to try and come up with a good solution that doesn't attract more homeless people here that we can afford to do.
Nathan Body, what do you see as the city's role in assisting the homeless in Bend?
Well, homelessness and the problems that go along with that are incredibly expensive for any local community. They're expensive in public health, in public safety, and in just the human toll of a situation for people that is just, is not good for the person and it's not good for the community. As a physician, I see lots of people that are without homes, either temporarily or long-term, because they get sick, they come to the hospital. Many of these folks are my patients. There is a small percentage of the homeless population in general at large that is homeless because they just can't manage it, either because of substance abuse or mental illness. And for those people, I think solutions like a Bethlehem Inn or some sort of housing solution that's highly assisted will help. And I think the more the city can assist with that kind of thing, the better because it pays off in the long run. It's much less expensive to treat these people as humans rather than sort of consider them a blight, which becomes more expensive in the long run. Now, a huge proportion of the homeless people in Bend are because there's just not that much affordable housing. A lot of people that are newly homeless or have been forced out of their homes, and for that, we really need an affordable mix of housing and good jobs that are living wage in Bend to help people that don't choose to be homeless to find homes and have a more permanent type of residence.
Thank you. Next question. Nathan Body, how should the city cooperate with other agencies to facilitate unified communications in an emergency?
Well, I helped develop the disaster preparedness guidelines for the state of Oregon, and sort of the first, second, and third parts of that plan really involve coordination of local public, local health departments, hospitals, medical facilities, things like that. We extend that into public safety, fire, police, county sheriff. So that has to be well-coordinated. I think that it can't be just the city of Bend, and it can't just be Deschutes County, and it can't just be Bend Fire. That really does need to be a coordinated effort. For emergency dispatch, sure, making sure that radios talk to each other, making sure that agencies cooperate and have plans for how to respond in an emergency or disaster. But more largely, we have to have a global planning approach to sort of what happens when these sorts of things occur, be they a fire, be they a natural disaster elsewhere on the coast or Portland that has a large influx of people coming this way, or whether it's a medical emergency pandemic, that sort of thing. So, you know, I think communication and planning at the front end will prevent problems coordinating things in a very tense and generally chaotic situation later. So that's very important for the city of Bend to take the leadership role and to help with.
Thank you, Mark Capel. How should the city cooperate with other agencies to facilitate unified communications in an emergency?
Well, I think the best example is what happened with the fire on the outskirts of Bend this summer. That could have been a major disaster. And instead, there was phenomenal communication between the city's fire department, the forest service, the governor's office, and the Red Cross so that there was response immediately. And that kind of communication is really the example of how we should work. And I think we all owe our fire department a thank you for the work that they did in preparing for that. Now, that being said, the radio systems that the sheriff, the police, and the fire departments are using around Central Oregon, not just in Bend, they are reaching obsolescence. You can't get parts for some of them. So there's a big project going on right now that is jointly run between the county, the cities of Central Oregon, and all of the first responders, police and fire, to come up with what are the best requirements? What do we need in this system going forward? And they're working on that right now.
All right, thank you. Mark Capel, how can the city attract more living wage jobs?
Okay. I think the number one thing right now is, I think we've done a good job already making the city more business-friendly. But I think our biggest challenge is availability of commercial and industrial land. So, the UGB is something we need to get completed because right now, about the only large lot commercial property available is Juniper Ridge. There just isn't much left. If you're looking for a five-acre parcel for a business, you know, finding it in Bend is a challenge. Add to that what we've done on enterprise zones so that businesses that are coming here or businesses that are expanding here have an incentive to do that, and those are tied to the value of the jobs they're going to add. Those kinds of things are what we're doing today and really helpful in this issue.
Thank you. Nathan Body, how can the city attract more living wage jobs?
First of all, I think we have to think about what is a living wage job in Bend. We have to make our town affordable enough so that the living wage is something that you can actually exist and live on in Bend. To that end, affordable housing and the ability to attract employees. Many small business owners that are friends of mine are telling me that they have opportunities and that they have people that they're losing because they can't find a place to live in Bend and they can't afford the amount of housing and the rents here. I think that we have to make our town more friendly to businesses by being more nimble and allowing our permitting and planning system to be less cumbersome. And to that end, small business can be affordable and small business can make enough of a profit that there are living wage jobs associated with that. And I think we just have to make sure that when we attract a large business that is on a multi-acre plot, that it's the kind of business that's going to provide living wage jobs and not a big box or something that might have a few jobs but doesn't really attract the kind of growth and doesn't really inject a sort of thing into the economy that we want here in Bend. So I think we attract the living wage jobs and the businesses that provide those by making Bend more affordable and making the town that we live in more welcoming to that sort of thing when it's the type of development that we want.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. That concludes the questions, and it's time now for your two-minute closing remarks. You each have two minutes, and Mark Capel, we'll start with you.
Well, thank you very much, Dave. It's been fun. This is always interesting. This is the best part of campaigning. This is when you get put on the hot seat and have to think on your feet, and it's actually fun, and it's nice to see this much participation. The, I'm going to go back to something I said in my opening comments, and that is, I want Bend to be the place that I still want to live 20 years and 30 years from now. And I think it's really important that we are prepared so that the growth doesn't overwhelm us. 10 to 15 years ago, we were ill-prepared. When the dramatic growth was going on, we didn't have the infrastructure in place. And we're paying that price today. I think we've done an amazing job getting long-range plans on sewer. Nathan sat on the sewer advisory group and voted for the rate increases and the suggested plans, but now is distancing himself from rate increases. Rate increases are a terrible thing to vote for. I said that earlier, and it really isn't a fun thing to do. But as long as we remain competitive in terms of what our rates are with other communities around the state and we're planning for the future long-term, I think it's, you know, it's something we have to do. We need to keep Bend a beautiful place, and if it just happens without planning for it, I think we've got a problem. And so I would appreciate your vote. I think we've come so far in terms of police and fire and roads and sewer and water, and so I appreciate your support.
All right, thank you very much, Nathan Body. Your closing remarks?
Well, thanks very much for participating here, and thank you for your interest in local government. Thanks again for organizing the event. I think that we've heard a lot this evening about infrastructure. I would challenge you to read between the lines that the big pot for the water project that wasn't necessary and that has been incredibly wasteful that was passed on to ratepayers is problematic. And the big pot for the sewer project, which I'll correct you a little bit on, I did not vote for the rate increases, certainly not to the degree that the larger sewer infrastructure group supported. I am happy that we decreased the proposed price increase for sewer rates quite significantly from where we started, but I think that there's still a way to go. I think that when we think about our public funds, we have to use them wisely, and we can't just keep dipping into the public coffer for this project. And that project, we have to plan intelligently and have enough funds left over for things like fire, public safety, transportation, infrastructure. And I think from the larger global perspective, we really teeter on a brink here in Bend with a boom-bust economy in our past, first timber, then development. We've seen the frightening results of a collapse of an economy that's based on one thing that is recklessly planned, and I think we have to avoid that. We have to grow responsibly and intelligently so that we bring all of Bend along with us and we grow our community in an intelligent, good way so that it does continue to be the place that we all enjoy. For that reason, I'm standing for public office. I appreciate your support. If any of you have any questions or comments, please contact me anytime, and I certainly would appreciate your vote on the election. Thanks.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We do invite the audience to visit with the candidates after the forum, or you may pick up literature on your way out. The League of Women Voters would like to thank Channel 11 for television coverage, KPOV 88.9 Community Radio for their coverage, the Deschutes County Library for cosponsoring tonight's event, Deschutes County for the use of their meeting room. And I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County for holding these candidate forums. They are a valuable community resource, both the league and the forums. And thanks to Nathan Body and Mark Capel, the candidates, for Bend City Council position number five. Election date is November 4th, so please remember to vote. Thanks for coming, and good night.